All right, I believe recording has resumed, so we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone. My name is Janet Frick. I am a resident of the Cedar Creek neighborhood. And this event is sponsored by the Cedar Creek Civic Association. The co-moderator for this event is Rick Rose. So Rick, why don't you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Rick Rose, Cedar Creek resident and Cedar Creek Civic Association Land State Chair. Happy to be here.
Rick keeps all of our yards in good shape for pickup of leaf and limb. Personally comes around and gathers.
Personally comes around with a big truck.
I'm just kidding. But welcome, everyone. And we are recording this so it can be posted later for those who aren't able to attend. We are very appreciative and honored to have both Audrey Hughes and Patrick Davenport here tonight. They are both candidates for the County Commission District One seat, which as of this election Cedar Creek is now part of. And so we greatly appreciate both of them for running. We want to have this opportunity for us as a neighborhood to get to know them. We have some great questions for them. We're going to alternate who goes first and who goes second throughout, just to keep things balanced. So without further ado, we'll go ahead and get started. So the first question, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you both in general, we'll try to keep answers to roughly two to three minutes. You'll both have a chance to respond to both questions. But you know, if you feel you need more time, it's important to get good answers. So our first question will go to Patrick first. So the first question is, please introduce yourself to the audience and tell us why you're running for office and what are your important issues? So you know, how long you've lived in Athens, your occupation, et cetera?
All right. First of all, I just want to say I just got out of a meeting, so you may hear people walking by, so I do apologize. First of all, I'm Patrick Davenport. I'm born and raised in Athens. And I love my community. I went to Gaines Elementary, Hillsman Middle, as well as Cedar Shoals High. And what I do for a living with Economic Justice Coalition, we started a small cooperative, clinic cooperative. And I helped manage that and one of the business owners. And what we do is go around and clean homes and offices in the Athens and the surrounding area. Currently, there's about seven of us and each of the owners, each of the workers have ownership as well as get to make decisions in, in the business. I'm running because I really do joy serving the people and I really do enjoy giving back to my community that I've been in for 40 years. And it is a daunting and stressful job at times, but at the same time, I, you know, I enjoy, I enjoy serving the people. And currently I live at 750 Morton Road. So if you want to stop by, I'm never there, but if anybody's interested to stop by to learn more about me, that's where I live. That's it.
Rick, Rick will jump in, or I guess we'll just go from, yeah, after one person finishes, the next can just unmute and start to talk. So Audrey, you're, you can respond now and then Rick will ask the next question.
Okay. Good evening. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate you inviting me to this tonight. I'm looking forward to getting to know more of you in Cedar Creek. My name is Audrey Hughes and I am originally from South Georgia, grew up on a farm. And I came to Athens a lot as a young person. And I was just thinking, the other day I was on my way to the state science fair downtown at Classic Center. And I got behind a school bus of kids from Thomas County, which is down near where I grew up. And it was obvious they were going to the science fair. The kids were in the back just hustling and bustling, all excited. And that's, that's what I remember about Athens or those fun trips to Athens, doing things, being competitive, being encouraged to do more, to see more, to learn more. And that's part of the reason why I'm running is every time I came to Athens, it was joyous. It was happy. It was fun and I learned things. And so I'm hoping to bring some positivity to this town. I do teach in the school system here. I was at Hillsman for eight years. And I transitioned to Clark Middle about two years ago. And my job there is I'm a gifted collaborator, so I get to do all the fun things like the competitions with students. And I thoroughly enjoy it and I'm living the dream that I wanted to. So should I jump into big picture issues or I'm gonna keep it rolling?
I think just for the benefit of the listeners, we'll have the moderator like ask the questions.
Yeah.
And then, and then they know, you all have the questions, but the rest of the people may not.
Okay, I will follow up with, I have lived all over the Southeast and I've been here back in town for about 10 years. And I do think that gives me a unique perspective of just living other places and seeing some things that are successful that, that I'd like to try here.
Thank you. Thank you. This is Rick Rose. This question is first addressed to Audrey and then to Patrick. What do you think are the most important immediate issues for our area? And how do you plan to address those issues? And relatedly, what do you believe is the most important improvement we need inside District One? And Audrey, that's first to you.
Gotcha. That is a loaded question, and I don't know that any of these can be solved really quickly, to be quite honest. But I think our biggest issue right now is that Athens-Clark County has more needs than its tax base can support. We've got a lot of residents that live in poverty and those that are in middle class are also struggling. So I think we've got to find a way to expand our tax base. We need to work on ways to encourage businesses to stay here and work hard to recruit new businesses to locate here to create well-paying jobs. And I would advocate that our mayor and commission reach out to the state and federal government because we are in a really unique situation. We are the smallest landmass county in the state. And we cannot tax every acre in this town. A lot of it is owned by nonprofits. UGA owns at least 4,000 acres. Government agencies, we've got research facilities with the federal government. So we've got, we've got a lot of need. We've got a tax base that is really small and it's hurting itself. And we've got to do something. So I think we're in crisis right now. And I think we've got to reach into our toolbox and we've, we've got to ask for help any way we can. But immediately, couple of other issues is we're growing quickly. And Southeast Clark District One is relatively rural compared to the rest of the county, especially downtown. And so a lot of people would like to keep it that way and some don't. So you've got to keep that balance there between the country charm and, and conveniences of city. And I've heard differing opinions since campaigning and even before campaigning about what people thought should happen. And so I do think there are a couple of really easy things that we could do to make some changes. But a third area is, I think Athens-Clark County can do more to work with agencies and institutions of higher learning that are here in town to help our kids. And that's, that's something we could do and it wouldn't cost anything. I work with kids now in a gifted program and we offer, the way I run the program is I offer those services to every child in school. So any kid who wants that enrichment can get it. So it's, it's not just saved for some. And we've got fantastic partners. I've got relationships in the community that are affiliated with UGA and Piedmont and leisure services and other groups, and they do a great job. But it's, it's almost like our bureaucracy of these two organizations, the people at the top can't connect these groups that really want to help. Every UGA professor I've reached out to for help in the 10 years that I've worked with students in Clark County has been more than willing to help on personal time and, you know, things like that. I think we need to work on those partnerships within the institution just to make them stronger. And that's something we can do that costs nothing. We just need people willing to work hard. So some things we could do immediately that would just be small things that, that wouldn't cost a lot and wouldn't be horrible to try to implement would be, well, never one of the cost of living is super high. Inflation is, is really putting a damper on a lot of people's wallets. And I cannot imagine having middle school kids in my household right now because I see what they eat at school and they eat all day long. And I see parents in the grocery store with grocery carts full of things. So I, my two, one's grown and out of the house now and the other one comes by when he needs to raid the pantry. He's a college student at Georgia. So I get where these families are and I know it's tough. So some things we could do to help families reduce their cost of living would be to, to offer more free entertainment services. Athens does a great job with entertainment, but I think maybe some more family-friendly events would be great. CCSD just had a family fun day this weekend, but it was way over in another part of town. So it didn't go. I was over here on the east side campaigning. But I think we could do more things, you know, free events, festivals where families don't have to pay. I think we could add some real simple things like next year, when the next school year starts, I'd like to see a bus stop at Whit Davis Elementary School. I'd like to see a bus stop at Barnett Shoals Elementary. That would be super easy. Now, I know the commission and mayor would have to vote on that. And if I get elected, I wouldn't even be on the commission yet. But I think that's something that we need in place by next school year, just to give those families access to the rest of the place.
All right. I think those are my solutions. Yeah, thank you. That's a, that's a great stopping point. We'll jump over to Patrick now. Thanks.
Yes, um, okay, I'm having some audio problems.
Yeah, you, you sound good. We can hear you just fine right now.
Okay, good. Okay. So the big picture issue that I think we have on the, is unfortunately it's still poverty in it. And regardless of what direction we go in, well, hopefully the steps that we're taking now, we'll be able to put a dent in it. But we would, we continue to see a poverty issue in Athens where people are just not paid enough. And of course, the cost of living is making it harder for people to live in Athens-Clark County as well as property taxes. But that's a very loaded issue. It's multifaceted because poverty affects people's quality of life. It affects our school system. It affects our crime. It actually even affects our, our property values. You know, generally places of poverty, property values go down or they're the most undesirable. That's why you, you see your crime. But to fix it, we need to continue to bring in higher paying jobs, which I think our economic department is doing a really good job at. And we need to definitely work with our school board as well as with the UGA to collaborate more. Because there are also our community partners that have a huge impact on our students, a huge impact on our community. As well, some of the great things, some of the things, the most important improvement that we need inside District One is one of the questions that's coming up is, one of the question that we'll be answering in a few minutes would be medical facilities. But we'll talk about that later. But just specifically for District One, one of the things that we need definitely right now is, you know, more services, more businesses. I, a lot of people, we did a survey about five, six years ago, where a lot of people drove to the other side of town to get services like shopping, food, groceries, retail. Back in the eighties, East Athens used to be the destination of choice. We used to be like what Els Bridge. And what's, what Els Bridge is now and what we're trying to do is to get back to that. So people won't have to travel so far to get essential services. But I am want to say that I would like to keep East Athens. I like the growth, but I don't want it to be like Els Bridge or the Atlanta Highway. Keep it, keep it small because there's a quantum life that people like about the slope, slower pace, the star, see in the stars at night in East Athens. But sensible growth is definitely needed. Hopefully that was three minutes.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're good. That was great. Okay. So thank you. So we'll move on to the next question, which will go to Patrick first. So as you just alluded to, a couple of the specific needs that have been brought up within our neighborhood, people in our neighborhood have mentioned, we've talked, you know, there's been talk about an east side library. And also there's a lack of any urgent care on the east side. We used to have an urgent care that was in the Goodwill Shopping Center, but that it does not seem to be open anymore. Can you speak to either of these issues and what developments we might hope to see on either of them?
So we had, so we had care, not care, ready medical. Unfortunately, the, fortunately, they were not getting the traffic and there were some financial issues. There was actually a couple of readies that consolidated or closed down, but we did have ready medical on the east side a couple of years ago. And but we do need medical services on the east side. East Athens, population wise, is growing retirees. So we got a lot of retirees, got a lot of baby boomers. We got a lot of folks who don't have kids or a lot of people who are, who kids are are moving out and moving away and graduating. And unfortunately, as we get older, our body breaks down. So we need, we need more medical facilities outside to accommodate. I've been working with Piedmont. Piedmont has an idea of potentially expanding on the east side. There's property that they own currently, but the same yes and I was hopes of, we gotta talk about, elaborate on. Eastside Library, Dr. Karen Myers, her current commissioner, she is convening the meeting to, to, to convene for the Eastside Library. It is coming. It was part of our T-Spot in 2020. It's coming. Right now, we're just doing, we're doing site selection. And Dr. Myers has asked me to help her out with that because of my familiarity with the school system, well, with the, with East Athens. Then I would prefer the Eastside Library to come, go into the Old Gang School. The reason why the Old Gang School is because the facility is already built. As if, if we build a, put it at another spot, we have to build a facility. We gotta grade the property, grade the land, cut down some trees. But we would need to collaborate and work with CCSD and partner with them. And also to have enough space for our youth development initiative that we have as well. But I think a gang school location is a perfect location because it's walkability to Gaines, Hillsman and Cedar Shoals as well, right next door to our biggest neighborhood, Cedar Creek. And most of the neighborhoods, it's walkability, accessibility to bus lines and other services.
All right, Audrey, we'll jump to you on same question.
Okay. Well, on that, Mr. Davenport, I totally agree. We do need a healthcare facility on the east side. And I used that clinic a couple of times with my daughter. I believe that's where we went and got our first COVID test back at the beginning of the pandemic. So we definitely need something on the east side. And I know she has a medical condition and I think I shared with some students last week that it's easier to go to an urgent care and it's much cheaper than calling an ambulance. And I got really good at kind of propping her on me. I'm not a huge person, but propping my 20-year-old daughter up on my shoulders and just kind of dragging her to the car and driving to an urgent care. So we definitely need that here, not just for everybody, really, just overall community health. And, and that's something that I hope we can get. And so if we're working with Piedmont, if we're working with St. Mary's, Ready Clinic, whomever, we need it. So let's, let's do it. Eastside Library, I taught at Hillsman for years and I've been hearing about an Eastside Library. It's on the way. It's on the way for 10 years. So I hope it becomes a reality. And I've reached out to Dr. Myers, myself, a couple of times just to keep her prided on what I thought should happen. And what I think should happen is I think the community members that would use the library, those of us that live over here on the east side should be asked in some sort of survey where we would like it to be. And I know that sometimes government officials don't always listen to the public. But I think it's important to get feedback of where people would like to have it. I've seen that the Gaines School site might be a good one. I've had community members suggest, well, why don't they put it in the old Kmart? Nothing's there. So I've asked about that. But what I would like to see the committee do is, is come up with a list of really viable solution, really to come up with a list of, of locations that they could put a library at and then let people vote. And then if they decide not to go with what the, you know, share the results and let people know what those results are. And if they made a decision in favor of what the people also wanted, share that if they choose something different because of cost or, you know, other factors, like basic infrastructure that would need to be there, share that, be honest, be transparent. And I'm saying that because the town I was in several years ago, they had something like this come up. And 90% of the public wanted the library in one spot. And the commissioners put it in another spot and people were really upset and they even named it something different too. So I think as long as government is asking for input and then being transparent about what they ultimately decide to do, I think the public understands and is happy. But I'm glad to see the libraries coming. And yes, we definitely need healthcare facilities on the east side. Thanks.
Okay, this next question starts with Audrey too. It pertains to a couple of areas of concern that were mentioned by our residents. What do you think Clark County should do for homeless people? And also what role should the county take on with regard to litter along our streets?
The homeless question is a loaded one and it's a nationwide issue. My daughter moved to Denver back in August and I went out to visit her in October and they've got the same, most of your large cities have the same issue. I've taken kids to Washington DC every summer for the past 20 years except one, and that was due to COVID. And we have homeless people all over the United States of America. And so it's a national problem. And I'd really like to see the federal government step up to the plate and do something for these people. A lot of them are homeless veterans and I've got a lot of veterans in my family and I am, I don't think there should be such a thing as a homeless veteran. I think if they served our country and they put their life on the line at some point in their lifetime, then, then we have an obligation to help them. And a lot of these people are mentally ill or addicted to substances. And you know, you have other cases where it's, it's a parent with dependent children who's going through a domestic violence situation. We have a great setup here with Project Safe. They do a fantastic job. I wish we had that for other folks that find themselves without a house and the same type of support. So I really think that's a federal issue and I think Athens, I think local people here have a heart that is huge. Charles Hardy especially, he is, he is a phenomenal human being, in my opinion. When the pandemic first started, he was the one bringing boxes and boxes of mask and hand sanitizer to the schools. So I applaud him for everything he's trying to do. I just, I think it's bigger than Athens. And I think it's bigger than what we can do just here. I think we need the big guys in DC to help us out and make some decisions. Since this is a nationwide issue, we're just, we're just one little spot that's going through this with everybody else and we need help. So I don't know exactly what we should do. And I think everybody's trying to figure that out. But I do think what we should do is study some programs where they've had success. And I've heard some examples and I don't want to go into detail, but because I could talk all night about that. But I do know that there are some cities that have had some success with programs for the homeless. They, they deal with, you know, treating the substance abuse, treating, getting the mental health and then helping them with job training. And I think that's huge, teaching them how to do something. And then putting them in apprenticeship type situations where they're, they're working with somebody who, who is skilled and is training them at the same time. So then when they do get out, and I think the first step program here in town is, is a step in the right direction. I just, I'm not sure that we can do it alone without help from bigger and deeper pockets. And as far as the next question was, let's see, litter. I think Athens Creek Chronic, Keep Athens-Clark County Beautiful does a great job with the Adopt a Highway programs and that type of thing. I, I think we need to get our young people that stay in this town for maybe eight months out of the year, nine months out of the year. I think we need to work with them a little more, get, get their help. I know in my neighborhood, we, we work Whit Davis Road and we do, we have regular pickups every couple of months. But I think with our young folks that are in town that often create a lot of this waste, we need to work with those sororities and paternities and other service organizations to, to get them to adopt a highway, pick up something. And I think that can be done. I've got a friend who, she's a house mother for a sorority and I've, I've told her several times, if you need to get the girls out there and clean up that street. So I think just developing some of these partnerships with youth groups, not just college youth groups, but school groups. The team I sponsor at Clark Middle now, the one I sponsored at Hillsman for a long time, we would join neighborhood cleanups. But I, I think we're big enough now because I've got a group at Hillsman that I'm working with. I've got a group at Clark Middle. I think we're big enough. We could, we could take a stretch of highway all by ourselves. The problem is I work with kids that don't drive. They're in middle school. So it's all dependent on parents bringing them. And sometimes it's, I've tried to do a few and sometimes it's me and like two other people picking up trash, which makes for a very long day. But you know, we could stick with it and see what happens.
Thank you, Patrick.
Okay. Okay. So the homeless situation is, is a, is a very complex, can't be answered in two to three minutes. I don't think Athens-Clark County, we, we've tackled this, we have tried or attempted to tackle homelessness through Wine Athens, through all these other initiatives. It is, it is a national issue and it's a state issue. We need to work with our community partners as well and our local partners, as well as the state and federal governments, government to tackle homelessness. It is very complex. You know, mental health issues, substance abuse issues, emotional issues, just people who have given up as stated vets, you know, some PTSD. But one of the steps that we can do locally is, you know, one of the things that I mentioned during a, a meeting was that we need to hold our homeless service providers accountable. We give them hundreds of thousands of dollars every year, sometimes millions a year. And it seems like the problem is, is not gotten better. Other, other problem that the, that we're, the commissioners and the mayor is working on now is unfortunately, some of our neighboring counties don't have the, the homeless services that they, that they should have. So some of our neighboring counties are sending the homeless individuals to Athens. We have talked to some of the sheriffs and some of our neighboring county to say that, not that we don't want to, not that we want to turn people away, but we, we need to work together to help find some of these individuals, the care and the need that, that they, that they need. So they won't, so, so they can get the help and need so they can get, get out of homelessness. But it's, it's a, it's a huge issue that's going to take the community and our community partners to work on because it's something that, that's not new to Athens. We've been trying to tackle this issue for decades. But my main thing is to hold the, the, the homeless providers in Athens accountable. Let's find out what works. Let's get, help these individuals to whatever crisis that they have. And most importantly, let's find them homes. Let's find them jobs. Let's find them the resources they need to get back on their feet. And also that, and finally, there is the reality that there are people out there unfortunately who want to live, who want to be homeless, you know. And I, I'm not a healthcare professional to, to, to grapple or to understand that situation or why people want to be that way. But there are some churches around us who are, who are combating that problem. And we should seek feedback from them and get input from them to understand how can we help those individuals who are the most severe of, of houselessness. When it comes, but it's a seriously honest to God, you know, with politics aside, is a very complex situation with multiple layers. When it comes to littering, I wish I can lock up everybody who throws trash on the ground or throws it out their car window. We, it is disgusting. I don't understand why individuals would do that. We do have a hotline where you can report it. We're installing, we just approved last year and just bought cameras, portable cameras that we can install in troubled areas to find out who's littering. We're increasing our fines as well. But the best thing that we can do is to encourage our community partners and encourage residents and neighborhoods as well as churches and individuals, individual groups to do adopt the highway and neighborhood cleanup. But another part of the problem. But another part of the problem is some of our trash haulers, not on purpose, will hit a bump and some of the trash will fall off the back of the truck. And, and you know, the driver may not see it, but, but the best way to, I feel that to combat littering is solve more cameras and letting, giving people access. That's one, educating people to know that they can call a litter hotline when they see it, when they see someone littering. Because it's, it's disgusting, you know? Nobody wants to live or walk a street that's full of McDonald bags or, you know, dead diapers and stuff like this. So, but it's a problem. And there are solutions that we're working on now.
All right. Thank you, Patrick. Um, are we going to shift gears a little bit now to talk about some budget related things? And the next question, we're on question number five for Patrick and Audrey. This is a, there's a sort of a multi, this is a big question. Certainly one that would, you know, we could probably talk for 30 minutes, but we'll try to keep it as condensed as possible. Regarding the Athens Clark County budget, do you believe that the budget needs to grow or does it need to be reduced? How do you think this should happen? And kind of relatedly, this was a separate question, but we sort of lumped it in together. What areas of the budget do you think should receive more funding and which areas of the budget should receive less funding, if any? So Patrick, that one goes to you first and then we'll go to Audrey.
Okay. So, um, so depending, okay. So I would like to see our budget to grow, but I don't believe our budget should grow and with, with through our mail rate. So the more businesses we draw in, the more tourists we bring in, we, we generate a, a huge amount of revenue from our sales tax. So that's one area that our budget, I believe should grow. Why our budget should grow is because our employees, ACC staffs, people who clean our streets, people who protect our neighborhoods, to me are underpaid. They can go to a, a city nearby and get paid more for the same amount of work. Also, um, what, what department or area and that I believe that needs to grow? I think we need to provide more money for mental health services. I, I, I 100% agree with that. There are a lot of people out there who are in crisis mode and I don't think there's adequate providers out there, other than our police department and our hospitals to, to assist these people on a 24 seven, 24 hours a day, seven days a week basis. And you know, I believe more money spent on mental health services is needed. Thank Governor Kemp. He has provided more money in this year's budget for mental health services as well as President Biden. He's also doing the same as well as providing more money for mental health services. But through us, it'll be through our independent agencies that we provide those funds. But any one particular department that, I'm a big recycler. I would love for our solid waste. They have a, a large turnover, our police department. I can, I think all of our departments needs, needs better pay and more money in our budgets to do to enhance the quality of life of our Athens.
All right, Audrey.
Yeah, that's a loaded question and Patrick and I agree on a lot of those things. I think the budget should grow just to accommodate what's going on in the rest of the world. We, we're going through the great resignation and a worker shortage. And these people are not going to come to work if, if we don't boost the pay. I'm in education and same thing, I'm seeing, you know, they're, they're going to have to cough up cash for people to come fill those spots. There are other places they can go and if someone can find a better place to go, they're going. So I think that's, that's something we're going to have to do just to keep quality workers here in Athens is, is we're going to have to pay them a decent wage. And I do know that some of the salaries here, particularly in education, me for example, if I were to hop in the car and drive to Gwinnett County every day and teach science there, I would get a $20,000 a year pay raise. Just driving down 316. And let me tell you, it's real tempting because I'm at year 21, I'm at year 30 and I'm one of those in CCSD. I've been stuck on that same pay scale since year 21. So I've been at the same pay rate for nine years. And I have voiced my concerns about that to them many, many times. We'll see what happens. So, so I think in some areas, our budget's going to have to grow just with keeping employees. We want to keep these people that are invested in the county, that are invested in the city, that have institutional knowledge. We don't want to lose those folks. So I think that part of the budget is going to have to grow just out of necessity because we've got to have these people with that skillset to do the work. I'd like to see it grow through expansion of businesses. I'd like to see more shopping here. We're losing things left and right to O'Conne. I'll just say it. O'Conne is about to open up the Wire Park facility and I'm really worried that our downtown is going to suffer once it opens. It's up here close to the east side and it's going to be like a giant food court venue brewery. Just a facility that on game days, I'm afraid we're going to lose all our downtown business that, that we're dependent on. And, and I'm a teacher and I need people spending money here. That's how I get paid. So I'd like to see businesses increase. I'd like to see us do things that are creative to draw people back to Athens to have a great time, to spend money, to stay here. Let's do some neat tourism. We've, we've got some fabulous folks here with a world of knowledge, all sorts of things. We could do a storytelling festival. I used to live in Jonesboro, Tennessee and it was a tiny town and people came from all over for that storytelling festival. And that's something you could do with families. I, I could even bring my older parents. It's something my dad could do. He's 86 and he doesn't like to move a lot. So I could sit him down somewhere and he could sit and listen to stories and then maybe get up and tell some himself. So there are things we can do to encourage, you know, business people to come here and stay here, spend money. Another thing we need is we need a hotel on the east side. There's not one here at all. So another thing on the east side we need is a music venue. There's not one on the east side, other than Cali and Tito's on a Sunday night, if you catch them on the right Sunday night. And I can't remember the schedule, but I hit it every once in a while. So I'd love to see more businesses here. I'd love to see like some stores. I know some of my friends and I would love to see a Target on the east side, like a, a full size Target. We'd like to see a, a place we could go when we need to get last minute things for a kid who's got to have an outfit for this, that, or the other. You know, just, just a clothes store. You can't order everything off Amazon. And I will say now, now that we can tax and internet sales, I think that's helping Athens out. And, and that's a relatively new thing because that didn't start out that way, but we are benefiting from the online shopping finally. And then another way that we might could creatively get some money from the state. Again, this, this county, we're raising a lot of other people's children as young adults who come to school here, you know, 35, 40,000 of them. You're raising mine right now. I mean, he does come home, I'm still here, but you know, he, he'd rather see you all most of the time or the UGA folks than, than mom. So we're raising young people. That's kind of our crop. We're taking care of them for some of them, four to six years or more. And then we send them out to the rest of the state and world to make a positive difference and take all that knowledge they learned here and do something great with. I think we're in a unique position as a college town, doing what we do. We provide a service with these young people that we are fostering and creating them into thinkers and professionals and skilled workers. I, I think we have an opportunity to go to the state and say, hey, Athens needs help. Please help us out. Start thinking about us maybe as an agricultural county. And I know some of the act counties get some tax breaks that are pretty good. Consider us when you're giving out these rural grants for schools, for healthcare programs. Put us in that bucket of consideration. We automatically get excluded because we're classified as urban, but we don't have urban money. So that's, that's a unique idea. Maybe it's pie in the sky that Ms. Hughes is talking about and, but you know what? If, if you don't ask, you're not going to get it. And that's my philosophy. If, if you don't tell people what you need and give them an idea, they just, they don't know. And so if you sit in silence, your answer is definitely going to be no. But if you give it a try, they, they might say yes.
Um, thank you, Audrey. Rick, I'm kind of thinking that question number six has already been answered.
Yeah, I, I have two. Yeah.
Okay. So maybe we should just go ahead and go the, and for those listening.
You go ahead to budget.
Okay. Okay. So, so, so the next question, uh, and we're, I think, yeah, since Audrey went second, she'll go first on this one. So just so you all know, the question we're skipping over is, do you believe that Athens should increase its tax base? And if so, how? They have, both candidates have, have already spoken to us. So we'll move on to question number seven. This is a policy related question as well as budget. There has been some discussion on the Athens Clark County Commission about advocating that some of our budget that goes towards policing should move, part of that budget should move towards increases in mental health services. And this position is sometimes referred to in the media as defund the police. Although it's really, you know, I think it could more accurately be said to be about reallocating some of the police budget toward mental health. What is your perspective on this initiative, which has been a topic of discussion at the commission and why?
Okay. I'm glad you asked that because I, I want to clear some things up. I, I think we do need to improve community safety and I think that's the overall archie goal. It's, we want everybody in the community to be safe and that's all citizens. And that includes those that are serving in uniform. We want them safe too. So I think we need to focus on proactive measures to reduce crime before it happens. Like get our kids involved. And I know Athens has some great programs with youth development. I work with some great programs that involve young people. Let's, let's keep them busy and off the street, teach them how to do something. I'm all about skilled trades and keeping kids engaged and things that motivate them. For example, if, if they like dance, let's, let's offer dance. Let's offer drama, theater, arts, music. And, and we've got a great program with I Heart Music. We've got chess and community. So we've got some great programs already going and they are partnering with the schools. What, and, and I come from a unique perspective in that I've coordinated summer school programs that, oh gosh, like four schools during the tenure. So I've been here and I coordinated the after school program at Hillsman. And those after school programs and those summer school programs are a perfect place to, to start some of those because you've got the kids there, you get them there by bus. Parents don't have to take them. Of course they can take them. So the transportation's provided to and from, and they get meals, they get breakfast and lunch. So those are covered. If we could partner with more of these agencies and our local universities, both Piedmont and UGA, to come do some fun things with the kids and then some educational things as well. I know the vet school does some amazing programs, but our kids can't go because parents have to take them. They're all the way over to vet school. We could do some really cool vet in the box programs. That would be neat. So I think we need to, proactive measures is let's work with our kids, but what can we do for the grown folks already out there doing stuff right now? Let's, let's try to engage them. More community policing. That's helpful. Building relationships is key too. And I know I'm a teacher and we go through all kinds of de-escalation training and, and we work with the same people that the general, you know, the general population, I see everybody. Those, those practices work. I'm just going to say they work. They're really good. I've not, I mean, I use them every day. Now they're not always super successful and sometimes I have to call for administrator backup occasionally, but you know, we're making progress and, and it's a skill that you have to learn. You don't just go sit in a workshop for a day and learn how to do this. And I, I think we may need to on the front end, it may cost us a little more to make this transition to, to train our officers, to train our law enforcement and our mental health people. It, it may take more money just to train them on how to work together effectively. And an example I've given before is when I moved into my house, my house sits on a slope and the water would drain down and kind of pile up around the front porch. And I was worried about the foundation if that continued over time. So I had to make an initial investment in a drain and some French drains that pulled the water away from the house. And I hated spending the money. It was painful. It was a big bill too. But for the long-term health, to create a, a strong foundation that would last for a long time, I had to get that water away. So I had to make that initial investment. So I think with our improving community safety, I think it's painful right now that we're having to spend money. We're coming out of a pandemic and people are struggling. But I think it's something we can't not do. And I think overall, if, if we stick with this and we keep trying, that I think we'll see continued improvement. I mean, I work in a school that uses restorative practices and I'm starting to see some improvement. And I think people coming out of a pandemic, I think a lot of us, or many people forgot how to interact with each other. We were isolated so long in our little cubbies and homes. And I think that's what we're seeing in the larger world too. Because the escalation in crime is not an Athens only thing. It's going on all over the place. So I, I think we're readjusting to being together as humans in an open society. And, and we've got to learn to work to do that. I think we need to actively support victims and survivors of both crime and domestic abuse. And, and that's something I've not heard a lot of other people talk about. They need support. And they don't need to be forgotten when others are focused on the perpetrators sometimes. And every, everybody needs fair treatment in the law, absolutely. And that includes the victims. I think a lot of these issues also deal with the court system and that's, that's a huge factor as well. And, and for a long time, people, I mean, it's common knowledge that the wealthier you are, the better lawyer you can afford and more likely you are to get your charges dropped or a lower sentence or, or whatever. And, and that's something that probably needs to be changed. And I, I'm not sure how to go about doing that. It's another money issue and it's, it's all part of being in this community with a high poverty rate. I wish, I wish every system was just, but unfortunately it's not. And, and that's a huge issue that I think people are trying to tackle now. And I think this community's done a good job with that and we're still working on it.
All right. Thanks. Uh, I'm going to bounce this question over to Patrick now. Thank you.
All right. So I get the national narrative that took place a couple of years ago that people wanted to defund the police to provide for mental health services. I agree that we do need to provide for mental health services. Most of our crimes are committed through the caveat of poverty, um, just drug use, um, mental health issues and people going through crisis. But for Athens Clark County, um, just to look at things locally, our police department is actually underfunded. They're similar to, they're like teachers. They have to buy, um, breastplates for vests. They have to sometimes have to buy their own bullets because our department is underfunded. I know that's not sexy. I know a lot of people in our community don't like giving, uh, increasing our police budget, but the reality is, uh, since being a commissioner, our police budget has increased every year. Um, and our, our police budget will increase again this year because they're underfunded. We're losing a lot of, um, morale is low because of the defund the police. Um, it's hard to attract, um, like O'Conne County, honest to God, is, is literally taking a lot of our officers because they're paid, are paid more and they're more respected. And for us to have a much more safer and just community where people are not, where burglaries are non-existent, where people's cars are not being entered and trespassing, we need a, a decent police force. But at the same time, we also need to put more money into mental health services. There are a lot of people out there who are going through crises. So for me, you know, my, my, my short answer, we need to, we need to increase both because locally our police department is under, underfunded, but also we need to, um, put more money into our mental health services. Because I did not realize how bad the opioid crisis is in Northeast Georgia. It is, it is terrible. I, I don't know where these people are getting all this junk from, but they're getting it. And it's ruining people's families, ruining people's lives. And we just need that infrastructure in place to help these individuals to stay clean, to help these people go through whatever treatment that they, they to he- help these people go through whatever, um, treatment that they they need. So my short answer is, I I'm, I'm gonna continue to advocate for more for our police department because I have family members, friends who work for our police department. It would be a crazy, um, family reunion if I was part of the defund the police. But, um, but we also need to contribute more to, um, our mental health service as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna skip, uh, to Audrey. Now for some thoughts.
Patrick, Patrick will start this answer.
Okay, we'll just swap them around. Okay. All right. Patrick, let's stay with you. For your thoughts about the current county commissioner, commission and the actions of the last four years, what is a specific policy that the county commission has passed in the last four years that you have supported? And why? And relatedly, what is the specific policy that the county commission has passed in the last four years? And you have, that you have opposed and why?
So I I came in, I'm fighting for, um, to increase the county minimum wage. I want the number one way to combat poverty is pay people more. I know, um, some of the the stigma that go behind that. But, um, truth be told, there were a lot of people and there were, there were some employees of ours who who were doing really phenomenal, awesome work in our community, who were getting paid less than what if they, if they went to, generally, if they would have went to a private contractor or to another, another workplace. So I'm very proud that we finally, in our last year budget, um, increased our minimum wage for county employees to fifteen dollars an hour. And we're working on wage compression now. One thing that I oppose, and you know, and I I love feedback from the community, um, I did oppose the homeless accountment that, um, that I think Charles Hardy, I know Charles Hardy is doing a phenomenal job. He's doing, uh, he's doing his best. However, um, that's only a two-year project, um, for two point five million dollars, two point, two million dollars. Um, I think we should have had a more holistic approach. Um, I I think it it was, it was rushed. If if we really want to tackle homelessness, we need a strategic plan. Uh, we need, we really need, um, strong community input. Um, but it's not that I am insensitive or don't like homeless or tackling homelessness. I just think our approach has been tried in other cities and has been vetted through other cities. And, um, some has worked successfully, some hasn't worked successfully. But, um, the model that, the model approach that we have, that we are taking, um, with two years and then after two years is up, after spending two million dollars to retrofit the property, um, and legal fees and insurance and all that, what happens after that? So I, just for me, I don't think that's a good use of taxpayer funds.
Thank you, Patrick.
All right, um, I think some things that I've agreed with, and I was pleased and happy to be an Athenian, were bringing up the wages of county workers. And I will say, it, it was advertised as that, but I know for a fact, I had a county worker in my household that didn't get that raise that was advertised. And, but that's okay. We're moving forward. Life is good. I'm glad people are getting it now, and I'm glad they're recognizing the hard work that people inside those offices and and on those trucks and in uniform do. I am pleased that they made some policies to accept all people. They made some statements to, um, the accepting of the LBGTQ plus community, um, people of all faiths, people of all ethnicities. They came, our county has come out with some really strong statements, supporting those folks and and having safe workplaces for them. And methods of reporting things when they don't quite feel so comfortable or there's a problem. So I think that's why Athens is such a fun town. I've got relatives that love to come visit just because it's an open. So I'll just say it. Some of my relatives are part of the LBGTQ plus community. And there are places in Georgia that they go and they don't feel safe. Athens is a place where they feel safe. They can walk around, enjoy, go to restaurants, shops, and not feel intimidated. Some of my friends of different ethnicities from foreign countries and things like that feel like Athens is a welcoming place and they enjoy it and and they like the diverse culture here. So I think Athens has embraced its diversity. And and we're doing what we can to foster acceptance. I think that's a good way to say it, and and I'm pleased about that. What probably not a specific policy, but just an overall, um, as a citizen who reads the paper and read, well, the news online, don't read a hard copy paper anymore, and someone who has read minutes of commission meetings, it it baffles me why sometimes with large-scale purchases, there's, there's not a time for public comment. And it's almost like they, and I know we've had a lot of money in the last year come into the city through American Rescue Plan funds and and assorted federal programs to try to get communities back up to speed and help them out. I would like to see local county government do more to put out proposals and and actively seek public input into these large-scale purchases. I think that's important. I think with a county with a small tax base like we have, I think the taxpayers need to feel connected to how their money is being spent. And from what I'm gathering, just just for myself and listening to people on the campaign trail, they would like to be more aware of how the county is spending money. So that would be my, uh, criticism, and that would be something if elected that that I would change. Is that have more transparency with how we are spending dollars and give the public more opportunity to have some input. Because it does seem like some of the decisions that have been made, especially this year, have been very last minute. And it's like, whoa, all of a sudden, they just did what? So that's kind of where I'm at. And I do want to go back to to one thing I didn't finish up, in- increasing our tax base. I think we have a huge potential to capitalize on the STEM industry. We've got a medical school now. We have an engineering school now. And I've been doing some work during the summers. It's a joint program between Georgia Tech and University of Georgia. I I think we could have a really cool STEM corridor, maybe not a research triangle like in North Carolina, but we could have a corridor that connects, um, our research facilities and really push those jobs. And I know there's one coming. I read about it in the paper today. I read about one last week that's coming to the Gwinnett Barrow County Line, the Rowan Foundation. So I think we've, we've got the opportunity to capitalize on STEM jobs with our connections to Georgia Tech and UGA and this nice little corridor that we have going up and down three sixteen.
All right, thank you. I, so we're, we're at our last two questions, but I think I'm just, I'm so happy that we have kept this to basically right at an hour. I'm just like, I'm so pleased. You guys have both done a great job answering questions and, uh, you know, being very informative with your answers. So I feel, I just want to say like this has been a a great opportunity to get to know you both better. Our final, the the final question, the final two, I will combine into one, um, that relates to communication. Uh, our two previous commissioners, Andy Herrod, who served our, uh, area for a long time and currently Carol Myers, both have, or both had monthly newsletters that they sent out that were very informative about what the mayor and commission were doing, what were upcoming issues that we might want to be informed about, et cetera. How do you intend to communicate with your constituents in District One? And as you answer that, I will also invite you, if you have any closing, um, things that you would like to say, uh, as we wrap this up. So Audrey, we'll start with you.
All right, well, um, I, at Hillsman for many, many years, was the one who wrote the blog, the newsletter, the electronic newsletter for the entire seventh grade, and I would send that out every week. And I was managing sixteen other teachers to get their information in. So man, being in control of my own newsletter and not having to wait on others to send something out would just be a breeze. So you would definitely hear from me, and I would, I would probably have something like a blog. I like that format. It's forgiving. If you make a typo, you can go back in and change it, and nobody, none the wiser. But it also allows you to have a running record of everything in one spot. And that's what the feedback I got from parents and teachers. A lot of times, a a fellow, a colleague would come to me and say, when are we doing so and so? And then they'd look at me and they kind of see my eyes twitch and they'd go, oh, yeah, I should check the blog. So I would do some sort of electronic newsletter, and it would be a running record. And you could go back into archives and see things. Another thing that I would do, I've been told that I'm the queen of surveys. And I did that a lot. Um, at Hillsman, I do that a lot at Clark Middle. I think it's important to get people's opinions and people's feedback. I'm on the HOA board in my neighborhood, and when I came on the board, I I first suggested that we survey the residents about their thoughts about every little thing we were spending money on in the neighborhood. My fellow board members were like, no, we don't want to know. And it's like, yes, we do. We do. So we now do little surveys and we keep a year-round digital suggestion box that is anonymous. So they can just say things if they don't want us to know who we are. And you know what? Second year on the board and it's working just fine. Nobody has abused it. People give really honest, good feedback, and and I think I like the anonymous platform just because then they don't have to tell us who they are and they feel more open to share what their thoughts are. So what you would probably see from me is, is an electronic newsletter, and you would see lots of little surveys. And I would set deadlines on them because there might be a decision I'd have to make, and I definitely want feedback before the time ran out. As far as anything in closing is, I think I'm the candidate that would push for some positive changes. I think I have a unique perspective as an educator, working with kids. I'm on the front lines of poverty in this community every single day, and I choose to stay here, knowing I could drive down the road and make a lot more money. I love this place, and I want it to be that same town that when I was a little kid and riding on the bus up from Cockwood County. I I want the kids here to feel that same excitement in Athens. And I'm all about responsible and sustainable taxation. I think we can do a lot to combat poverty, but we've, we've got to give our kids and give our adults some hope. I think we have, and we didn't talk a lot about this tonight, but our senior citizens, some of them are feeling left out of all this progress that's happening. And I don't think we need to forget them. We need to keep them involved and engaged and provide opportunities for them and and partner with UGA and some of these concerts they do. If they have spare tickets, let us know. We'll get a bus together for some seniors that can take those spaces. There are things we could do to make people's lives better that don't cost a lot. It's just gonna take partnering with agencies and organizations and our two universities that are in town. We can do it. Second, this didn't come up either, but, um, some of you may know me from the community and I'm really big into going green, protecting the environment. And I think we need some common sense measures. Athens is going to grow. I don't like it, but it's going to grow. It's coming. But what we can do is, is plan for that growth. And let's, let's keep some green spaces. Let's, let's keep places that people can go and animals can go, places of refuge for everybody. So as we are growing, let's plan for that urban growth with the environment in mind. And then bring transparent structure to Athens Clark County government, be an open book. Ask me anything. I'll have little surveys out. The newsletter will be up to date. So there wouldn't be any secrets and you wouldn't feel like something just wham, it just happened and you knew nothing about it. So I think that's the strength I have is, is communication and getting feedback. And then finally, I'll fight for the east side. I'm not afraid to say anything to anybody. I have gone and sat in politicians' offices and asked for lots and lots of things. I've gone into stores and asked for pencils. I mean, if if I'm willing to do that kind of thing, I'll certainly fight for the east side. So I hope that gives you a little introduction to me for those that don't know me, and for those that do. I'll fight for you guys, just like I did your children over at Hillsman.
All right, thank you, Audrey. Um, and Patrick, we'll put that, uh, question to you, both communication and closing comments.
Yes, I currently do a newsletter, um, um, for District One. I do, every now and then, I do have some typos, some miss, um, because, um, but I think the commissioners who who do do a newsletter are very committed and dedicated to them. Um, so if i- if re-elected, I will continue, um, to newsletter. I think it's important. I know Andy Herrod, his newsletter is literally the gold standard in newsletters, um, compared to all the other commissioners. And that's a model that, you know, um, we all should, um, follow after. But, um, yes, I will c- continue to do, um, monthly newsletter. And if there's something pertinent to the community that needs, you know, input, um, you know, maybe an insert during the, during the month, to just get feedback. I'm Patrick Davenport. I'm born and raised here. Um, I love my community. When I first ran, I ran on just, I re- I remember the old roses that was in, um, the Willow West Shopping Center, the, the, the growth in Cedar Creek Neighborhood, um, you know, some of the homes that then the new buyers who live in Cedar Creek now, I've been in. I've, you know, I have some of my high school, middle school, grade school friends. But I I I really just want to get not just East Athens, but all of Athens, back to those glory days where people were riding their bikes. I I used to ride my bike to school on Highway seventy-eight near, um, down that road. I would not recommend doing that now, but, um, just getting back to those days where neighborhoods were neighborly, community or community, people were friendly. Gay school used to always have these festivals. Um, there used to be all these community events. It was just a pleasant time to be in Athens. I would like to see that, that, that growth and for East Athens to to return as well as, you know, just that neighborly, neighborhood-type feeling. And, um, education was strong. Uh, we had a good police force. We had very disciplined teachers. We had very disciplined churches and community leaders. Um, and, um, it just, it was a good time to be in Athens, and, um, I'm, and that's what I'm fighting for. But I know, you know, I have a blemish on my record. There was not a single person that I've spotted who had not read or heard about it. And I know it's a challenge for people to vote for me. Um, and I know that people feel ashamed or that I'm not fit for office, and I get that, you know, um. There's not an argument that I can honestly have, other than the fact that I own my, my responsibility. There's other people in our community who've been in that same position as I was in, um, that never saw, that never made the papers. But, you know, day one, I was, I took ownership. But, and it's a challenge for me. I, you know, every time I knock on somebody's door, um, I have to relive that moment. And, but I, you know, I could have easily dropped out. I could have easily said, you know what? I need to just go ahead and deal with my personal issues or whatever. But we have made in the past three years so much progress that, you know, I just felt that it it would be a detriment just to turn back now. And I love my community, my burial spot. This is what I tell, um, constituents. Um, I was born on Robert Hardeman Road. I was a quarter mile from there. I was raised on, um, Lexington Road, right across the street from Dr. McLaughlin. If y'all, anyone remember them or him. Um, and I live on Morton Road, which is less than a mile from where I was born and raised. My burial spot is at Athens Memory Garden, which is in that dead center of all the places where I was born, raised, and where I live. So I'm, I'm dedicated to this community. I, you know, as a Christian, I will always love everybody. I will always do the best um, that I can. Um, you know, I am human. I make mistakes, but and I do the best that I can as well. And, you know, um, but regardless of how the outcome come, how the outcome on May twenty-fourth, I will always love everybody. I will always love my community, and I will always love whoever represent District One.
All right, thank you so much. If everyone would just, you know, if you're, whether, join me in, uh, expressing appreciation for both candidates. You both have have done such a great job of sharing your time and your heart with us. We cannot thank you enough for this time. And and so we know you're both very busy, but you guys have have really given us a lot of great information. So just on behalf of the Cedar Creek Neighborhood, uh, we thank you both. We wish you both all the best. Uh, we have a high voting, uh, involvement in our community. So May twenty-fourth and early voting for the three weeks before that, and we always share all those. And we always share all those early voting locations and everything. And we have several people in our neighborhood who work at the, at the polls as well. So um, yeah, thank you both very much for your time.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. All right, I'm gonna stop the recording.
And thank you Janet for putting this together.